Were needed for those projects. This particular project is not included under that list. It's considered to be exempt due to utility upgrades and existing facilities for the city. Based on the scope of the project, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending to city council that the five-year CIP program include the CAMP EV charger installation project, and that it is consistent with each of those master plans, area plans, coastal plans, traffic calming plans, and move Monterey multimodal plan.
So Matthew, do we have technical issue? So Levi, should we continue while we're waiting? Okay. Sorry, Matthew. Okay. Right.
Staff is recommending the planning commission adopts the resolution. The project is found to be exempt under CEQA along with sixty other projects that are included in the list. Twenty-two of those projects include the need for further CEQA review. This is not included in that list of projects. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation. If you have any further questions, I believe that both city staff, city staff in charge of this project and myself are here for any questions you may have.
Thanks, Matthew. Any commissioners have a question for Matthew?
Quick question. So this is the second revision to the list. Is there a due date? Is it due at some point in time to some authority?
The recommendation or completion of the project under the grant.
The capital improvement project list for 2024-25, is there a due date for this?
I do. I'm going to defer to Levi.
The list is ongoing. So the list has already been adopted in its current form, and this is an amendment to that list. So it's a running five-year list. The due date, it will get forwarded on to council for adoption after this. But I'm not sure when they're going to be revisiting the list as a whole. That's typically Public Works prepares that list and will come back at the beginning of the fiscal year typically. But specific due date, I believe there are due dates associated with the actual project, with the actual installation of the chargers associated with the funding of that, but I'm not specific, clear on the specific dates of those.
So this list can be added to at any time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Mike?
First of all, excuse my back when I have to turn around and look at the screen. We have technical difficulties. Among the projects, I'm still kind of mystified on one of them. The Mark Thomas Drive Bicycle Lane project, is that on the list to council for approval?
Not under what is before you today.
Well, it was a question in general on that project.
And didn't we approve that on a previous
I could confirm the list.
Well, I I've tried to look a couple of different places and I haven't seen a determination. That's why I'm asking.
Doing a word search on me.
I'm sorry.
I am doing a word search in the agenda report currently for that particular project.
Yeah, that was all a question. That was the only question I had. Thanks.
No. Anything come up on your chart?
Not popping up immediately?
Oh, um, do you want to wait till Levi gets back?
Just so I can get some answer.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I have a small question. So I realize this is a minor amendment to a previously approved list, but it caught my eye, the engineering for the tunnel, the Lighthouse Tunnel. Are you familiar with that project?
I am not familiar with that project.
Okay. Just caught my eye. So I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Oh, all right. Well, Levi, now that you're back, Mike had a question about a project. You want to see if you can get?
My question was that I have a difficult finding a project that was on the original NCIP project list. And if this is an amendment to that list, is that project included? And that is the Mark Thomas Bike Lane.
And that was on the originally adopted CIP list and not, and okay, not an NCIP?
I'm sorry.
I think I can answer that question. This is a different list. This is the capital improvement project list, not the neighborhood.
I have a difficulty finding
Yeah.
the recommendations for approval on that project. So I didn't ask the question.
Yes, I think you're referring to a project that is on the NCIP list as opposed to the five-year CIP.
I understand.
Got it.
Thank you.
Well, maybe you know this one, Levi. The, so there was the, you know, engineering for the Lighthouse Tunnel. That was, and I now realize we've already looked at it. Just caught my eye reviewing this list. But what is, what is that engineering for the tunnel? Do you know?
I won't be able to speak to the specifics of those projects. Those are public works projects, and we don't have public work staff here as
Fine. We're here to look at the amendment. Yeah, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, let's see if there's anybody in chambers that has a question on this item. I don't think so. Erica, anybody online for the hand raise?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, then any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Sure. I moved that we recommend to the city council that the capital improvement program CIP project list for the 2024-25 fiscal year is amended with the Clean Air Management Program EV Charger Installation Project is consistent with the city's general plan, area plans, master plans, specific plans, coastal plans, traffic calming plans, and move Monterey multimodal plan and supersedes planning commission Resolution twenty-four zero one zero, et cetera.
Outstanding. Second. Great. So Sandy and Mike put the motion up. Could you please do a roll call, Erica?
Sure. Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
See, the motion carries.
Great. Next is four ninety-nine Alvarado Street Use Permit Application UP twenty-four zero two one four for a massage establishment application Better Side Wellness LLC. Do we have a staff presentation for that?
That would be me again.
Oh, thanks, Matthew.
We'll share my screen.
I'm also here to talk about four ninety-nine Alvarado Street for a massage establishment under use permit application UP twenty-four zero two one four. Staff's recommendation is to deny the use permit with findings, and I'll go over the reason why on the following slides. The building is located at four ninety-nine Alvarado Street. It is right by the traffic circle at the beginning of the primary section of Alvarado Street. It is in the former Rite Aid Building on the second floor. Access to the second floor is from a small doorway off to the left that is separate from what used to be the Rite Aid Building. Used to be offices in there. The interior currently of the entire building is vacant upstairs and downstairs. Some background on this project. The zoning is planned community downtown. It is within the downtown specific plan area. The general plan land use designation is mixed use, and the previous use of this particular space was office. The proposed use is for massage therapy. There would be seven massage rooms, including eight tables. There would be two tables in one of the rooms, a reception area at the front. Currently, there are five massage therapists employed by the operator, and the proposed operating times is from nine thirty in the morning to nine PM. The layout of the site is indicated here as a clarification on the map. On the left side, that door that opens out is that one that goes to the outside. So there's no interior access. This is all second floor representative mapping. There's a men's and women's restroom and a break room in the back as well. Analysis is that the proposed use would not involve the expansion of the building. There's no additions to the exterior or changes to the exterior, and the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District has confirmed that there is water on site. Use permit. Use permits in the city, the planning commission needs to find three findings for approval of the project, and finding number one is that the proposed use must be in accordance with the objectives of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zone or the property. While the general plan land use map designates the site as mixed-use neighborhood and the proposed use is allowed with a conditional use permit for massage establishments, the use would not support a balanced mix of commercial services in the downtown area. Goal three point A for the downtown specific plan is to ensure an attractive inventory of business establishments to develop and define an inventory of desirable and high-quality business activities which are compatible with the vision and which will attract visitors, encourage pedestrians to use the downtown. Also included in the downtown specific plan is an objective that projects should include a wide range of business types, including retail, restaurants, hotels, and development containing a mix of uses. And there are currently six existing massage businesses within five hundred feet of the proposed establishment. Additional massage businesses would represent further concentration of the use. The business currently has a use permit approved approximately three hundred and seventy-five feet away at four seventy-nine Pacific Street. This operator has another site right now at four seven five Pacific Street that they would be vacating and then moving to another site. The use permit at that former site at four seventy-nine Pacific Street runs with the land. So the applicant's proposed new use permit at the other site would constitute an additional massage use permit in the downtown area. So here's the five hundred foot radius that was referred to. The upper left yellow rectangle includes two massage businesses up there. There's one that was approved right across the street as well at four eighty-two Alvarado. And there, yes, there's six other ones in this vicinity. If we go a little bit further to a thousand-foot radius, there are thirteen distinct massage businesses in the downtown area. And overall, citywide, you can see that semi-higher concentration in the downtown area in comparison to the rest of the city. To further elaborate on finding number one, Objective oh, one, two, notes that a project located in the Alvarado district should contain active uses such as retail and restaurants, and staff found that the proposed use does not offer an active use for the area and would further concentrate massage establishments in the Alvarado district. Staff finds that finding number one cannot be met due to an over-concentration of massage businesses in the downtown area and that the use would not fully contribute to the objectives of the downtown specific plan. Moving on to finding number two, the proposed project must be found to not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. Staff found the massage business owner is, is able to make this finding. They are required to obtain a separate massage establishment permit through the police department, and there'd be no impact to the neighborhood from a safety component because it would be operating within an enclosed building. And finally, finding number three, proposed use needs to comply with any conditions required for that use, and if instead of denying, the planning commission decides to approve, the applicant would be required to comply with whatever conditions are placed on the project. With that, staff's recommendation is to deny the use permit with the findings specifically related to finding number one. That concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here, and I believe the applicant is also in the room and interested in making a few words of their own.
Thanks, Matthew. Any commissioner questions for Matthew?
Again, so I have a few. So the, did the building department get a look at this?
The building firm, the part, one thing that was not included in the presentation is that they are proposing some interior renovations, including the addition of two walls to create the total number of rooms, and the building department is aware of the proposal.
Okay.
I'll further elaborate on that. So they, the building department doesn't typically review use permits. They're just simply changes of use. They would review the change of occupancy at the building permit level and any work associated with that change at that point.
Okay.
If the entitlement were to be approved.
Okay. I mean, I don't know the ADA requirements, but anyway, that's not part of this review anyway. So the other, the same owner currently has a massage business on Pacific Street. They're going to abandon that one and move it to this location.
Correct.
So couldn't, i- is there any logic to the, the idea that, well, they're getting rid of one and moving it, but it's, so you end up with a net, you know, no net change in the overall number of massage establishments?
So technically, use permits run with the land and not with the owner. So the use permit that's allocated to that other property still exists.
Right. So you see, my point is that if they're getting rid of one and moving it to another location, it's still the same. I guess then some other massage could move into that other establishment because it has an existing use permit there.
That was staff's logic on it. Correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Sandy?
In the in the report that you did, they say there are five existing massage establishments within a five hundred foot radius, and a use permit was approved for an additional establishment at four eighty-two Alvarado Street. Without getting into my main point, which is that no personal services on Alvarado Street, four eighty-two Alvarado Street, I do not believe can be accessed from Alvarado. I think you have to go in through a rear door that enters off of Caiaprincipal. So that really isn't quite true that there's another one on Alvarado.
So there's a location, there is an approved use permit for a location that is in a multi-tenant building located on Alvarado. It's on the second floor. So you're correct, there is a, there is a restriction on personal service uses in the downtown specific plan on the first floor of buildings fronting Alvarado. That particular location is located on the second floor without frontage on Alvarado.
Thanks, Sandy. Dan? Mike?
First of all, I wanted to thank the, we've got comment on this one online. I do appreciate the comments. One of the things that if you go to tourist town, you see a proliferation of a higher density of massage partners, it seems, than others that are not so visited. And that's a concern because I think the intent of the original one of not putting on Alvarado was this issue. And that's my only concern. But so any questions on it? I don't know if the city has ever examined, maybe in some discussion on that point, but a limiting, further limiting, I would say, how many we can have in an area? Because you don't want to have that kind of reputation. Thank you.
Okay, would the applicant like to provide a presentation? You'll have three minutes. If you could introduce yourself, that would be great.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. My name is Cindy. My husband Michael and I run the Ocean Sun Massage together. We're currently located at four seventy-nine Pacific Street, Street One in Monterey, and we've been opening there for over three years. We have a pretty good reputation, you know, for providing professional massage therapy service to the community. And we're applying for the permit because we need to relocate due to the change of use of our current building. So the first seventy-nine building is being repurposed to a residential use. So they're building apartment there instead of allow us to operate business there. So I think like the use permit we have there will be no longer valued because they're changing it into like the residential use. And so now we're seeking a loan location potentially at the four ninety-nine Alvarado Street on the second floor. And we chose this location because it's close to our current one, and so that it is convenient for our current clients to continue visiting us. And we totally understand the city council about the over-concentration of the massage business in the downtown district. But since our, our current location of first seventy-nine Pacific Street is also like part of the downtown area. So, and we're locating instead of opening a new one. So we believe like the total number of the massage business would still remain the same like in the downtown area. So for these reasons, we sincerely request the planning commission can consider approve our use permit application. Yeah, we're open to any question. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Why don't we see if there's anybody else in chambers that has a comment? Please queue up and we'll go ahead and listen to your comments. We'll be three minutes each, and then we'll move to online comments.
Yes, I'm Bella LaFaso, and I'm here tonight to encourage the planning commission to deny the permit for a massage establishment in, at the Ordway Building. I reside on Alvarado. I am also the alternate for the NCIP Committee for the Downtown Neighborhood Association and a former business owner that had a business downtown Monterey. As one who walks the streets of Alvarado daily, I have recently Um, as one who walks the streets of Alvarado daily, I have recently been dismayed by the lack of care downtown has been receiving. Trash, dirty doorways, dead plants throughout the planners, curtain businesses, established establishments, all paint a very lackluster image. For the thousands who travel here, not to mention the many residents who call Alvarado, Alvarado Street home. The Ordway Building is a cornerstone entry path to our neighborhood, Wharf Conference Center and Commercial District. The planning commission needs to step up and create a welcoming image and viable establishment to anchor this main entry corner. I know the application is for upstairs and is the relocating of an existing downtown business on Pacific, Pacific Street. That has to move because their building is being converted into apartments, which is a very good thing. This highlights the need for downtown businesses to offer services that support the surrounding neighborhoods, enhancing the blue zone model. With 10 other massage establishments within the downtown and one directly across the street, Monterey has enough massage related businesses. I encourage all decision-making parties involved what would, in what will eventually reside in the Ordway Building. To think creatively with a vision that establishes an entry to downtown that speaks to Monterey's history, beauty and vitality.
Thank you. I'm coming up.
Uh, defining enough, defining what is enough. Good afternoon, sir, ma'am. My name's Steve Mullins. Uh, I was 30 years in the army. 15 years working for the Navy more. I've been, I've known this business since they opened. I find them meticulously honest and clean. I don't see anything in their reputation that would, especially where they are and any complaints about where they are. That would indicate to me that there's anything adverse about what you might consider. I'll make this, uh, three point, three minutes and two seconds. I'm here to speak about consideration of the spa relocation to the Ordway Building. I understand that Mr. Zhang's lease expired in August last year. Since that time in March, he was told of that, that he would be, it would be discontinued. Because the landlord wants to change to the apartments. Since then, he's been looking for another place. That's 10 months he's been trying to find another place. I know everybody who works there, their livelihoods depend on employment. That landlord, that the, I also know, I understand that the landlord has personally confirmed that he will convert it into, uh, residential spaces. And that seems to be overlooked in the, uh, recommendation. Made by Mr. Bagger. Uh, 479 will not continue as a spa, therefore the mathematics, the calculations are inaccurate. Finally. I understand that Mr. Bagger recommended against allowing, uh, recommended even against allowing Mr. Zhang's proposal to be heard in this forum. I don't understand why. I have examined the recommendation document prepared by Mr. Barget and I wish to make. Three, four observations and relieve with you some questions that I ask for reply. I suggest that the recommendation to deny is misguided in that it's founded on inaccurate data. I specifically recreated the 500 radius, foot radius map in the document using Google Maps. With an estimated accuracy of two feet. I recreated that map and I found it grossly different than the map that's in the recommendation. I estimate that the 500 foot map includes businesses that neither exist or should not be considered in the 500 feet. I could find no more than three such businesses and I walked the building that was just mentioned ostensibly on Alvarado. And there is no such facility there. I could not find it. I am aware of the one that's been approved. The proposal mentions five existing establishments. In that area possibly increasing to seven. So my question is. Do you have a criterion for the max number of businesses in that 500 foot area? Five, four, six, seven? I asked what that number is because I suggest that if you deny it, it is arbitrary. What tools did you use, sir, to draw your map and how accurate? Because I disagree with it and. 30 years in the artillery, two feet means death to me. What are the names of those five establishments? I could not find them. I challenge you to do that and I would love to hear what those names are.
Can you please, uh, finish?
I'm finishing. Question, this pertains to Old Town. How is the total number across Monterey, Jermaine to this particular issue? I found that irrelevant.
Sorry, you've, um, reached the end of your three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Soulay. I live in Old Town and I appreciate that the council and the planning. Requirements do try to give a diversity of businesses within our, uh, community and particularly our downtown. Um, I realize however, in reading the full report, um, as was mentioned, that the current business that they have. Is being, um. It has been revoked and according to the testimony here, the, um, owner is wanting to build. And has assured that he will build apartments. So I asked the planning department if they could not. Have a way to resend the permit that exists now at Pacific Street. Look for a way to do that. Perhaps since the owner is saying it's going to be converted to residence. The owner can then himself resend that part of the deed that allows the permit or rescinding. In other words, the permit, if you resend that permit. Then the number of current permits already there that you're already dealing with does not change. And I think that would be a big concern. It seems that, um, this will probably come up in the future too. So find a way where you can keep without additionally, making additional permits of the same type. Um, a way that if you've given up one, then perhaps you can find a way to do it. And that would allow then the, um, applicants to go to a more preferred location. It is upstairs from Ordway, what we all consider Ordway drug, um, as it was. And hopefully, um, this came up at Old Town Neighborhood, um. Meeting and, uh, it was, it was hoped that things like a, like a, uh, hardware store desperately needed. I've always wished we had back a, a salad bar. So as you're looking for things. Remember that the old salad bar at Jack's, the one at the Black Horse, gone, there's none. So there's things that maybe you could be trying to promote. That would be good uses of the Ordway below, but obviously this is upstairs. So look for a way to do it perhaps without increasing the total number of existing permits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mister's. My name is Jeff Davy. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Monterey. I am, I'm in the business of real estate and I do try to lease and sell buildings all over this town. And I will tell you it's difficult to lease buildings because of a lot of reasons, water, zoning restrictions, what have you. Uh, there's rules on Alvarado that don't allow certain uses on the downstairs, which have been adopted. They're fine. Uh, this is an upstairs location. It complies with the rules. It is exactly the same as 482 Alvarado. 482 has a front door and a back door. 499 Alvarado has a front door and a back door. Now I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I do believe if you forbid them from using the front door, it would be okay using the back door. It seems absurd to do that, but that's up to you guys. You can place conditions on it. I want to speak about why this is happening because we are not putting a new massage parlor in downtown Monterey. These poor people are being relocated in the interest of housing. Now this is a fact. I sold the person the building who's putting the housing at 479 Alvarado. I'm sorry, 479 Pacific. He bought those two buildings, the Canelio Buildings in order to put housing, much needed housing. And he has been working on that for years. It's finally coming to fruition. The city knows totally about that and I'm a little disappointed that the report doesn't say one word about it. I appreciate you bringing it up commissioner, asking the question is, what's the net situation here? Because it isn't a new one. They're one of the five or six that they're talking about. So, uh, this is not bringing in a new business. If you don't want these types of businesses in downtown Monterey, that's fine, but this is an existing business. Why are you taking away their livelihood? They, they don't want to move. They would stay right where they are and continue to be in business, continue to pay payroll and nothing would change. But in the interest of housing, much needed housing. They have to go. So they're moving. They're moving to a location that's zoned appropriately. But it just so happens that their use has frowned upon and we don't want any more of them. Well, that's okay. They're not anymore. They're existing. Uh, I don't really understand the logic and I think that you can do exactly what the first second speaker said. Put some restriction on the existing use permit at 479. That owner will never need it. And I am pretty confident he won't care if you take away his zoning that allows for that use in that building because it's going to residential. Uh, I just don't understand this and I really think that. You need to take special consideration in this case. There's no reason to displace. A successful business in our downtown area that simply has to move two blocks away. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Anthony Davy. I'm also a Realtor and property manager in downtown Monterey. And, um, I've worked with this building for my entire career since I was, uh, since the nineties, late nineties. And, um, the upstairs space has been always almost impossible to rent. If you go back to the, the early 2000s, it was just donated to OMBA. So that they could start themselves off. These owners are very proactive in the community. So they donated the space for the first 10 years. Of OMBA's life so that it could help grow that old Monterey Business Association that we all enjoy. Um, after that, the, um, the Rite Aid came in, so the Rite Aid took the upstairs. There are no potential tenants that have a retail business that have said they want the upstairs. So the upstairs is nothing but a hindrance to trying to rent the downstairs. And we all want to see those cute little retail stores. Now, of course, we can't have one that uses any water. Because of the requirements and the rules in our community. But in order to get a retail space downstairs, we have to do something with the upstairs to make it affordable for the people downstairs. So there, there has to be a tenant up there and I don't know what you could possibly put there besides something like this. There just isn't any other choice. The, the one that we talk about across the street at 482 Alvarado, they don't exist. So the, the owner of the building says that they didn't get approved and they're definitely not a tenant. So they don't even know they have the permit. If you guys gave it to them, there must be some kind of restriction on it that they think makes it not work. Um, and they aren't there. Uh, after these people opened, I believe we approved the, um, the one that's across from Trader Joe's, the Massage Envy. Which is a real retail looking space on the ground floor, I believe, as you first come into Monterey. So what do you see when you get to Monterey at our entrance? You see Massage Envy. If we don't like massage, then why do we put that one there? And the whole time we put that one there, we knew these people were going to be displaced. So, so we should have thought to ourselves, we're going to add one to the city that's at least, you know, make the rules the same for everybody. As opposed to making them special for a building that, that somehow the city might be involved in or want to have built. In this case, I'm sorry, but in this case, it's important to keep in mind of this too. We all want to see more housing downtown, but these buildings are also on Pearl and they're under zoned. So they have a much lower density for residential than 482 Alvarado or all the rest of Alvarado. This corner of Pearl is very minor residential. It's one third. It's one third the other ones. So you can do three times the units right next door, all of Alvarado. This is more like Pearl and this unit is going to be more like Pearl has a small door. Um, I hope I probably missed some of the things I wanted to say. That's too bad. Anyhow.
Okay, you still have time.
Oh, good. So. So the, um, the use is, is I guess it's not considered an active use. But there are a lot of people in the downtown area that use this service and they come downtown and then they get a coffee or they go do something. I know when the church came in, we were all upset that there was a church on Main Street, but it brings people on Sundays. So sometimes these other uses are worthwhile, especially when we have a business that is hoping to open or remain in our downtown. So I hope you'll consider this particular business. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Anybody else in chambers want to make a comment? Erica, anybody online?
Um, I currently see two attendees online. However, their hands aren't raised. Once again, information on finding, um. Finding information on participating in this meeting can be found online at isearchmonterre.org. And there are still no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to, um, the commission. Any comments?
I need some clarity on the, um, there was a, um. I can't remember if it's the downtown area plan, but it was on the screen momentarily that described the, um. The, the use of, um, personal services on Alvarado Street. Could that, could that be put back on the screen?
May I help you?
One moment. Thanks. What's that one? Downtown specific plan. So project located in the Alvar, Alvarado district should contain active uses such as retail and restaurants. So. Well, I, what I'm thinking is let's say that the, um. Uh, let's say that, that the idea that. There is no net increase because they, they've provided, well, we haven't seen evidence of it, but they've provided testimony. That there's no net increase in the massage, the total number in this area. So if that's not an issue, then this, we're sort of left with this one. And I'm wondering what, um, can we, can we give a description of how enforceable? Like should, for instance, is always a squiffy word in these situations. Uh, should contain.
Um, I was curious what personal services is. There's a lot of hair salons.
There's only three.
On Alvarado, yeah.
The ones that were grandfathered in and that. I believe there are three people here on the committee and one who is abs, two who are absent, who were instrumental in writing. The downtown specific plan was very, very specific about personal services on Alvarado. The three that are there today, by my reckoning, and correct me if I'm wrong. Are Supercuts, a hair salon next to the music store and a salon in the hotel. And those are the three that we haven't been able to get rid of yet. But the, the prohibition on personal services was limited to Alvarado Street. But proved for Tyler and Kai, Kai Principale, so.
So this, no, that's, that's exactly what I was hoping for. So objective zero point, one point two, it looks like. That's what's up there right now. So your familiarity with the, um, the downtown specific plan. Is actually discouraging this kind of a use. And front door or back door, do you think that matters or, you know, as a front?
The street, it's the actual street, Alvarado Street versus Tyler or Kai Principale of Pacific. And then first units on Del Monte and Franklin just to the side of Alvarado.
Which doesn't include Pearl. Pearl would be included in that too. Cause I guess this is Pearl on Alvarado.
Uh, Pearl in the downtown specific plan is not mentioned, but Del Monte and Franklin are.
So what you're reading of this specific objective. Of the downtown specific plan is that it would discourage this application.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. And I guess another question would be the, you know, I mean, that's the thing. If this is sort of the main finding, I mean. If we can't make this finding, then we can't, I don't know how we can approve the project, right?
That's correct. All three findings are required to be made.
This finding has to be met to, in order to approve the project. And according to you, it's sort of like against the, this one objective.
Well, we should, I just want to point out, this is an objective, which is an excerpt from the downtown specific plan. Matthew can show us the exact wording of the finding that needs to be made. But this is cited as a reference to why staff believe that that finding could not be made.
Mm-hmm.
So if Matthew, if you want to switch to the slide showing the actual language of the required finding. So if Matthew, if you want to switch to the slide showing the actual language of the required finding, um, so the actual language says the proposed use is in accord with the objectives of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zone. So what we're just looking at is an objective cited from the downtown specific plan.
Sandy, are we actually looking at something the city is attempting to do to discourage the salons from staying there?
Well, I'm surprised that the project even came to the planning commission because the, uh, discouragement of personal services on Alvarado Street was basically one of the tenants of the downtown specific plan.
Mm-hmm.
The reason is that it's allowed above the first floor on Alvarado Street. Yeah, personal services.
Not, that is the current code. So Commissioner Freeman's correct in that the existing spaces that she mentioned are non-conforming spaces that exist on the first floor. Uh, there are further limitations to personal service uses that were, uh, adopted specifically speaking towards, uh, to, uh, fronting on the first floor of Alvarado Street.
But this is on the second floor.
That's correct.
So.
But the first floor, second floor nuance is not what staff was using to base their.
Do they address the difference between first and second floor?
In the, in the code, yes. In the land use table, it does specify.
So it just states the first floor in the downtown plan.
That they're flat out prohibited on the first floor. They require use permit elsewhere. And that's why they're, it's before the commission today.
So there's a gray area here that we're trying to look at.
Well, I think, I think it's clear. It's, they're not prohibited on the second floor in the same way that they are on the first floor. They require use permit. I think the, uh, gray area, if you will, is whether or not this finding can be made. And that it's, uh, that the proposed use is in accord with the objectives of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zone.
But if the zoning ordinance is only referencing the first floor, then I'll see how it's an issue.
Well, that's in terms of permitted uses. So there, there, it's a prohibited use on the first floor. They require a use permit.
And then.
And then that's where you guys come in.
And then the hair salons are just grandfathered in.
Correct.
They were there before the plan was put into.
Correct, they're non-conforming uses.
One of the, uh, people testified, talked about that, you know, the front and the back door. If the, uh, let's say that the building permit somehow allowed them to just have a, a single entrance on the back. I guess it's facing Tyler Street. I don't know. I, I haven't looked for layout. Would that change things at all?
Uh, there's no distinction in the code or any of the objectives or goals of the specific plan to speak to where the entrance is located. Uh, staff's basing their recommendation, uh, around the concentration of the use.
Okay.
Out on the entrance.
But if, I mean, I think that came up already where the concentration of the use seems to be steady. I mean, there's no, just because there's an existing permit for a building, which is going to be converted into a residential complex, doesn't seem to make sense to me as a, a de facto use of that. Goal.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
That if we're looking at a certain number or percentage area being used for massage parlors, and the, the one that we're looking at now is a move from a building that will not be usable for that type of activity in the future, then it's, there's no change, the same percent.
Correct. As, as described earlier, the operator is proposing to move from that location to this new location. So the use permit will remain. There's been no application to rescind the use permit or have the use permit revoked. We do not have any active building permit for the conversion of the other building. There's, there is an active architectural review permit, uh, but it's not been approved at this point in time. So, um, yes, it could be that it's a no net change situation, but that would be a speculation.
With the building that they would be proposed to move from on Pacific Street, how many beds are in that building? If I understand the, the application here on Alvarado Street, it's going to be eight beds?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not actually sure how many beds the operator may be able to answer that question.
I'd like to know.
Yeah, I think we'd have to.
Can we go back?
Do you know that information?
I didn't, that would be a question.
So we'd have to reopen the public hearing, but we can't ask that question.
Let's reopen the public hearing. Can the applicant come back? Please? Thank you. Um, could you, um, please, um, try to answer Dan's question about number of beds?
Um, so for our current address, we have, um, six, uh, massage tables for the body massage and two massage tables for the foot massage, so eight massage tables in total in our current address.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, can we let another person?
To the discretion of the chair.
Please come up.
I just want to add that a condition that the existing permit at 479 be rescinded could be satisfied very easily if that was one of the conditions you wanted to place on possible approval. Is that clear? To rescind the permit as Mr. Hill just explained, you could do that. We could have the owner rescind that. I could ask him to do it. That'd be a condition. If it doesn't work, he would not, you would not have the permit proof. You follow?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you. Um, Levi, um, is that something we could look at doing? Could we continue this and, and advance of a decision on that?
If that's the direction the commission wanted to go, I would recommend just moving forward with this application and conditioning the, that the project prior to, uh, operating or issuance of any building permits, that the, um, existing use permit at the other location be rescinded or revoked.
When, when you rescind a document like that, is it a hearing or can it be done administratively?
It's done in the same process in which the, um, permit is issued. So it would be all the use permit process.
But it seems like, are, are we through with the public hearing?
Uh, yeah, no, we.
We wouldn't want to close.
To, um,
Deliver.
Commissioner, yeah, deliberation.
So it, it seems like they still have the sort of, um, fortunately, the, the problem of, of two different findings that are working against them now. One of which is the, which I'm fairly persuaded, you know, if they were to document it in some way. Right now, it's just sort of like hearsay. But still, the idea that, oh, they're, they're getting rid of the one on the Pacific Street, so there's no net gain. That's fairly persuasive, although all we have is, you know, people talking. The, the second finding, though, about the, uh, you know, that specific objective is still, I don't see how they're getting by that one with this application.
And I also think that in creating the specific plan, the idea was to revitalize Alvarado Street and to remove the personal services to the two, two side streets, two side streets in which there are vacancies. Please. And that the idea of Alvarado Street would be commercial below, commercial retail on the first floor and residential on the second floor. So to say that there's no other possible use for the second floor of the Ordway Building would be specious because that could be turned into residential if there were water, obviously, if there were water. So I, I don't think that they're in as big a hole as you might think from the, the people who have spoken, because the two side streets, there are vacancies. Um, I, for one, I really bought into the downtown specific plan as being one that would be a thriving commercial street with businesses below and residential above. And, um, this doesn't cut it.
Mm-hmm. So, okay. Mike?
There's a number of issues that have come up that raise questions. The idea that this could be used as a residential, this same space might have merit. Instead of a business that it could be converted into an apartment, looks like about the right square footage. But there's other issues. First, first of all, I do understand that the people are being moved against their desires. And that's the cause of this. The Alvarado specific plan came about because those of us who remember, particularly the far end of Alvarado, was a problem. And that generated a lot of discussion in the city that first of all, going to specific plans in the first place. I was forbidden to go down there by my grandparents and my parents. So I don't want to, you know, I mean, let me qualify that. When you start making exceptions, although that is part of the function of a planning committee, but when you start making exceptions, more people look to find their exception versus the rule. And I thought that the, when they wrote that plan, it was to minimize an overuse of certain functions in that area. That's what had been weighing on my mind when I looked at the what, what was on the board up here. I, I practiced the issues that arise when you get an oversaturation of any kind of business. But anyway, that, I think that, that kind of outlines my concerns here.
Mm-hmm.
If there is no objection, I would make a recommendation to adopt the findings the city has come up with and to make a motion that we vote on that.
Um, I think we're ready to go to a motion.
Are you making the motion, Mike?
That is the motion.
Motion.
With the findings.
To deny.
I'm sorry?
To deny.
To deny.
Okay, if we have a second? Sandy? Um, Erica, could you do a roll call?
Sure. Chair Blue?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Looks like the motion carries with a vote of four. The decision is appealable within 10 days to the city council. We have applications online or in our planning office.
Thanks, Erica. Sorry about that. Um, hope you can find a building in the Monterey area where you could, um, set up your business and, and an area off of Alvarado. Thanks for coming in, though. Um, next, uh, um, public appearance item is Consider 31 Solidad Drive Suite B. Use permit application, UP 24021 zip for a, oh, wait, you already did that. Oh, for a massage family, reduce parking application applicant. Um, Chris, you're going to be doing the presentation?
Uh, yes. Please bear with me. Okay. My name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a senior associate planner for the city, and I've been working with the applicant and property owners on uh, this project, which is also a use permit for a massage establishment, uh, located at 31 Solidad Drive Suite beneath. Uh, the staff recommendation, however, is to approve this use permit. Uh, just some background about the site. It is zone C with C1, which is our neighborhood, commercial district, uh, and has a general plan designation of commercial. Uh, and it's located in this, uh, Monovista Village Marketplace where there are a number of, of, a, a number of businesses. So, uh, what is the project? So it's a massage therapy business at 31 Solidad Drive. It's in approximately 1,500 square foot commercial office space that previously contained a dentist's office. Uh, the hours of operation would be from 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Monday through Sunday. Um, they would start with two to three employees and then have, uh, an additional, additional two to three as the business expands over time. Um, and the project requires a shared parking reduction and agreement. And so I'll explain that a bit on, uh, subsequent slides. Um, but here we see a site plan showing, uh, all of the businesses that are served by this parking lot. Um, and basically, this, this parking lot is on a separate parcel from two other lots, uh, that contain the other businesses. Um, and I do have a, a graphic of that. If you can tell on the right-hand side, it's kind of difficult to tell. But we have one parcel here with, uh, 41, where it's centered on 41. I don't think you can see my cursor. Um, and then the remaining businesses, where they go from 25, uh, I think it says 15 through 25 is a separate parcel. And then, as I mentioned, the parking lot is its own parcel. Um, and then moving on to the massage business. So this is the floor plan, uh, of, of the space. You'll see there are four massage rooms with each with, uh, a single bed, um, an office slash waiting room, and there's actually a restroom at the top of the floor plan as well. Um, so one of the major, uh, issues with this project is the fact that there, um, are not enough parking spaces for all of the combined uses at this slot. Um, the parking requirement for massage establishes is one per 500 square feet for total requirement for this specific use of three spaces. Uh, it's worth noting, the previous dentist's office, uh, medical offices require one parking space per 275 square feet for a total requirement of five parking spaces. So it's actually a net decrease in required parking. The existing parking lot has 46 spaces. As I mentioned, uh, it serves two adjacent lots. Uh, no use permit exists for the shared use of this slot. Um, so it does require, so essentially it is non-conforming with respect to the city code's requirement, uh, for a shared parking agreement for shared lots. Um, so as I mentioned, requires that agreement. Uh, the total requirement for all uses, including the proposed, is 48, exceeding the available 46 spaces. Uh, the zoning code does allow a reduction in required parking for shared lots, uh, that have this shared parking agreement. The maximum reduction cannot exceed 20% of the required parking. So in this case, the 48 required spaces can be reduced to 38. And again, 46 are to be provided here, so they can reduce their requirement to 46. Um, the applicant did supply an analysis of the uses on sites, the required parking for each use, uh, the hours of operation and the peak demand hours, which is, uh, helpful information for the findings that must be made for such a reduction and, and parking agreement. Um, and you definitely will not be able to see this without your, your working monitors. Um, but this is in your packet. Um, if you'd like me to refer back to any specific detail, this is that graphic that shows all of the different, um, data points that I mentioned, parking requirement, uh, peak hours, hours of operation, square footage, and, you know, the various types of businesses. Um, so to approve the use permit, there are three, three findings. Um, I've briefly just gone through them here since we just discussed the three findings on a similar, uh, conditional use permit. But staff found that these, uh, that this proposal is consistent with the zoning ordinance. Massage requires a conditional use permit. This type of use will not bring any sort of, uh, noise issues to the surrounding commercial uses and, uh, adjacent neighborhood. Um, parking would be addressed by this shared parking agreement. Um, the finding number two is that, uh, the use would be consistent with the general plan and will not be detrimental to the public health or safety or welfare of this surrounding neighborhood. And then the finding three has to do with conditions applied to the product. In this case, uh, some standard conditions apply as well as the condition to execute the parking agreement. Um, massage permitting is required through Monterey, the Monterey Police Department. Uh, and then, uh, if the applicant intends to place a sign at the business, they will have to get a sign permit from the planning department as well. Um, I did provide the specific findings for the parking agreement, since that's one that I think the planning commission has, uh, seldomly seen in the past. So the first finding is that the spaces to be provided will be available as long as the use is requiring the spaces are in operation. Uh, staff found that the project would meet this finding. The applicant has agreed willingly to enter into this parking agreement, which would ensure the long-term availability of spaces. The lot is not secured by any sort of gates or fencing that would conflict with operating hours of the businesses. So staff was able to support with the. which would ensure the long-term availability of spaces. The lot is not secured by any sort of gates or fencing that would conflict with operating hours of businesses. So staff was able to support with this finding. The second finding is that the peak hours of demand from all uses do not coincide, so the peak demand is greater than parking provided. Um, the applicant did provide, uh, operating hours and peak demand times for all uses. The peak demands are staggered amongst the different uses. Um, you know, we have uses, uh, like the market, which has a lot of peak demand during the lunch hour. There's a bakery that's really only has their peak demand in the, in the morning, um, as well as some of these other uses, service-oriented uses, such as the massage business, or there's a nail salon as well that have a later peak demand. Staff was able to make that finding as well. And the third finding, the adequacy of the quantity and efficiency of parking provided will equal or exceed the level that can be expected if, like, if parking is not provided. Uh, the site is already developed with the parking lot. It doesn't have much room at all to expand it. Um, the analysis confirms that the parking would be adequate due to the staggered demand times. So staff was able to make that finding. Um, so with that, staff is recommending approval of this huge permit. I'm available for questions. The property owner and the applicant are here as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Um, questions?
Yeah. Solidad Drive, is that allow parking on both sides? Refresh my memory.
I don't know if it's both sides. I think that on the side of the project, there is parking, but not, I don't think there is adjacent to the church across the street.
Thank you.
Um, when it says the spaces to be provided will be available as long as the uses requiring the spaces are in operation. So let's say that all the businesses shut down at five, nine o'clock, just for the sake of argument. Doesn't mean that anybody can come and park in the lot because the business is not in operation after nine o'clock at night?
No, that's referring to as long as the businesses are, are in operation, the, the parking spaces are made available. It's still very much a private property that is not, um, well, open for public parking. That's not associated with the business.
Not posted though, right?
I don't recall if there's signage there or not. There's definitely no gate or anything like that. So that's why staff felt comfortable with that, that, that could be satisfied because there's not a gate or anything that requires any change with operating hours of the businesses. But, uh, but yeah, I don't, I don't know. There's anything there that would necessarily prevent someone in the public from parking there, but it's, it's definitely a private property and not, not meant for public parking.
Okay. And I know I must say, what are our businesses, our new business, the massage establishment, what are their hours?
I just mentioned them. I think it was 10 a.m. to 8 p.m.
Okay. It's a lively parking lot.
Yes.
It's well-used.
So I'm looking at the Google Street View now. It looks like there is on-street parking on both sides. Uh, when you get to about the church, it is red-curved going towards Pacific on the church side of the property and beyond the driveway. Uh, so it does look like there's on-street parking on both sides of Solidad in that location for at least a portion of the property.
Any other questions?
Mike? Either, either one. In the past, we've asked for some instruction on findings, because this is one of those things that, could we also add a finding? That, that we, or a condition? Because in this case, why couldn't we post the times when parking? If, because it is private property, they have the right to post it. But I don't see any discussion on on that issue. Do we need additional information? Do we need to examine these kind of things?
So you're asking if the condition needs to be placed on the permit that would require posting that the parking lot's only available for the businesses?
And hours.
And the hours in which, uh, that is.
But, and the hours gets into, in the way of, if the employer parks his car in his own lot and has to go past the limit, or he has to come in for an emergency, there, there are, there's issues. That's, I just needed to know if we could add that condition.
Uh, the commission has the ability to add conditions as, as they see appropriate to, to ensure that the findings and, uh, and that everything is in accordance with the zone.
And is it a problem?
You know, I only see it as a potential issue if, if the, it's a multi-tenant, there are two multi-tenant buildings, uh, and, and business tenants come and go, and those hours may change. So if a business were to come in that had hours that extended beyond what the sign was posted, that could create some kind of burden on the property owner to update that signage.
But it is private property.
It is private.
Parking spaces are. I guess the owner could put dedicated parking spaces for each business.
Could.
Not the plan.
There's, there's not dedicated parking spaces right now, and I think there's a few that are identified for certain businesses, but in, in, as a whole, the parking lot does not have designated parking spaces.
Well, do we have a motion? Do we?
I just wanted to put out a wish list ahead of time.
I believe.
I wish that these people would develop a business association in that area of independent businesses and have a coordinated signage program. I think that they would benefit from that. It's become a very lively and well-used place, and I think that the massage establishment will do very well there. It's, it used to be practically deserted, but now it's full. And a business association might help them get to some of these issues that have been raised by the planning commission.
I just want to remind, uh, we still have the applicant here available for a presentation and public comment.
Okay, are we done with questions for staff? So, um, does the applicant want to make a presentation? Thank you.
I think I'll emphasize a few of the points that Christopher kindly made. Um, I want to thank you, um, for the time and the effort that you're putting this presentation together. So I put five slides, uh, just to, you know, look at the details a little bit further, I think. Um, so if we can click again. So 31B Solidad, that's the corner unit we have on Pacific Vista View and with the park, shared parking showing here. There are two buildings on site, as mentioned, and, uh, we have an owner here for this building, 31. And, um, he currently holds the shared parking agreement with the other, um, property owner, the other building's owner. So we do have that in the, um, on the record uh, as a parking, shared, shared parking facility. Can you move to? So this is the Google Earth view showing the location of the 31 Solidad at the corner. It used to be a, a dentist's office for the past 33 years, and, uh, and one of the, uh, dentists, I think, passed away, and, uh, this has been staying vacant for the past year. Um, so the owners here just explained to me that, um, it's been a while since this property has been, you know, visited. And when the dentistry office was in place, he has experienced no issue with parking, um, crowding or anything, um, from, you know, his, um, remembers. But, um, our, a, as we established, that the massage establishment would actually reduce the parking ban on the, on the site. So, um, the floor plan showed that we're not doing any renovations, uh, you know, big expansions or there's no exterior change. Interior, we're just utilizing existing layout and changing the dentist chairs to, uh, massage tables. There are a total of four of them. And, oh, I'm sorry, could you go back? Since, uh, one of the commissioners mentioned ADA, we have the ADA bathroom in the back that's shared, and we have a, a another bathroom that's, uh, belonging to the unit, and there's common corridors leading to a handicap ramp, so it's on the first floor. And this parking layout shows the, uh, the site is mixed use with all the established, um, usage and a total 46, uh, parking spaces with two handicapped spaces that's marked at the upper left-hand corner. So when we did, we worked together with the city to establish the, the different functions and different use and the timing that the peak hours they do. As mentioned, they are, they're, they do not coincide into one. And with the shared parking section 38114, it says when, when we do hold the shared parking, we can reduce the parking amount to 20%. We are currently per, uh, today's code, we are, we're only two parking spaces short. It requires 48 parking spaces, but we have 46. But with 20% reduction, since we have the shared parking agreement, it actually reduced the requirement to 38.4 parking spaces required, which means we're well, uh, under the, uh, the requirement. Um, that, that might be the last page. So based on this finding, I, I hope for a, a motion for approval. And, and this, this location is a mile and a half away from the Monterey downtown specific, man, I hope for, for your agreement. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before moving into public comment, I actually noticed on the slide, thank you to the applicant, um, I went to look at Google Street View. There is a sign that actually is posting the parking.
He showed it.
Yeah, so.
There's also ten on the street, ten parking.
Yeah. So there is, parking lot is already posted specifically that it's for tenants and customers only.
Anybody in chambers that has a comment? Um, Erica, anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
Thanks. Um, I guess we'll bring it back. Any discussion?
I move, uh, to approve this item as, uh, per the staff report.
One second. Um, Erica, could you roll call vote?
Sure, Chair Blues?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Hey, that motion carries. The decision is appealable within 10 days to the city council. We have applications online or in our planning office.
Thank you. Um, any commissioner comments? Or just?
I do have one.
Great.
Um, I don't know. I, um, the, the fires in Southern California were so disturbing, uh, ongoing. And I was wondering, you know, should we? I'm just not familiar with our forest management plan, or, I mean, uh, are our vulnerabilities in this case? I was wondering if we could agendize a discussion about that. You know, maybe the fire department would, you know, I just, I know there's the old Capitol site, like a Berry Hill. I'm kind of familiar with the parts of the city that are, that appear to be vulnerable. And I'm wondering if we should consider, um, just reviewing what the current, what the strategy in the city is right now.
That sounds like a great idea. Um, Levi, any thoughts?
Yes. Um, no, I agree. Sounds like a great idea. I think a good starting point could be, uh, maybe an informational item, agendized informational item where we can, as staff, kind of present what plans are out there, where these different documents are and what the status is of each. Uh, you know, most recently, we did do an update to our safety element as a part of the general plan update. So that includes, uh, areas where it specifically touches on wildfire mitigation measures and risks and vulnerabilities there, and the mitigation measures, uh, meant to address those, those risks. Um, that's just one document. There's other documents that aren't necessarily housed, uh, by the community development department that I think could be also good to have maybe fire staff also be a part of that, um, presentation. So perhaps, yeah, we can agendize something and then as an informational item, just, uh, for the benefit of the commission and the public.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Mike?
This, the presentations tonight illustrated why we need some of that discussion on what are findings? How can we, how do we deal with them? What can we change? And that those things come up periodically and with, because a lot of these projects come on longstanding problems in the city that we sometimes are made part of because we don't know exactly what we can or cannot do on addressing them. Kim has always made it pretty clear in the past what we could and couldn't do, but I'm looking at what we can, as, as an individual commissioners have a knowledge base to address the issues. I'll bring another example that is coming to the fore by a lot of people making comments is bicycle traffic on, in the city of Monterey. We've asked for some information on that because a lot of people are complaining. And I ask the questions, what are the issues in the city? Uh, that the bicyclists presume that they have right of way. Not really so. It pedestrians have right of way. But a lot of the city people kind of just assume that their opinions are what the law says. So if we could get some more of those informational presentations. Now, you know, I, I was asked, why can't we put radar on the bike trail? And the reason why I can't, yes, suggested, but we don't know. Thank you.
Yeah, it follows up with a thought that Sandy had brought up, um, in November, where we had discussed agendizing the issue of electric bikes on the bike path. And I think that's something that probably should come up as soon as we can make it fit your schedule.
Sure. Uh, I just wanted to coordinate that with our public works staff and then, and kind of get a, again, some more informational presentation on the multimodal plan, what they see, and then they can explain more in the different classes of electric bikes and what's actually allowed on the rec trail. So, yeah, I'd be happy to coordinate that and maybe.
Big project.
Maybe we could do a, um, you know, multiple informational items on an agenda where maybe we don't have projects ready.
It's possible include with the police department that is in terms of enforcement.
And enforcement, absolutely.
You can't, California just changed the laws.
They like to do that. Yeah. Yeah, they do that sometimes.
We do need to be careful what your role and responsibility is in regards to some of these issues. Some of these issues may be more appropriately addressed at city council. And so I just need to remind the commission of that. Um, there may be some issues that, um, you may want the city council to address, um, like speed limits on the recreation trail. But in the distant past, we had issues where, um, it was made very clear to me later on that, that we could not agendize certain issues for planning commission. So I'll.
Exactly what I was thinking of, Kim, at your previous.
So, um, we'll definitely take all of your recommendations to heart and think about them and see if there's a link to the roles and responsibilities of the planning commission.
And one of the things that I'll ask you is that when we signed on, there are things that the planning commission has to, is supposed to address. And I don't know if everybody here knows that whole list.
Sure.
So those are kind of the, kind of things that come up. And I'm not trying to assert power. I don't want power. I just, these are people, the problems that people bring when I ask the questions, I bring them up.
And I appreciate that. And, and we can help, um, working through Levi and, um, defining which ones, um, to recommend that those citizens go directly to city council to make a public comment.
That would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. So Levi, any, um, updates for us?
Yes. Uh, so just quick, uh, as you probably saw noted in the, uh, staff report, follow-up to, uh, end of year city council meetings. I know it seems like so long ago. Uh, but, uh, we had the joint meeting with the city council for housing element implementation items, and that was, uh, uh, adopted and went, uh, forward to second reading on December 17th, where it was, was passed. Um, and those should have become effective in the upcoming days, uh, 30, 30 days from that decision. So we're almost there. Uh, so, um, update on that. And then also our tentative agenda for the January 28th PC meeting. We do have one item tentatively scheduled, so it looks like we'll be meeting on that. I did also want to just, uh, we just got an email a couple of days ago about potential training opportunity. It's the Planning Commissioners Academy. It's going to be in, uh, Santa Rosa, California this year, and the dates are going to be March 5th through the 7th. So I'll forward this information along to the entire commission. So if you can just let me know if you're interested in attending that. I believe, uh, Commissioner Brassfield and Commissioner, uh, Blues attended last year. Um, and, and, uh, so, yeah, if anyone's interested in attending, just let me know whenever I forward that out and we'll get you set up.
It was very valuable. I would highly recommend it. Great.
That's all I have.
Well, thank you. Well, let's close this meeting up at, um, 5:30. Six. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.